Called order, please. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Adam Davis, Minister of Music, First Baptist Church Lowell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God our Father, we just pray tonight that you will bless this meeting, that you will give wisdom and guidance to the City Council as they seek to lead this community to guide them. Also want to pray for this community that you will continue to bless it and that it will grow and that it will prosper. God also want to pray tonight for those in our community who are dealing with cancer, the list is quite extensive, and other illnesses in their family. I just pray that, you know, your peace will be on those families and that if it's your will, I just pray that they will be healed. Just pray all this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Adam. Looks like the cold weather's taking a toll on our crowd. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jerry Foley. He's our new councilman from Ward One, Position Two, to those of you that have not met him. Jerry, wave your hand.
Thank you, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Camila Lamans.
Here.
Jerry Foley.
Here.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Carol Harmon.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Sean Ingram.
Here.
We do have a call.
Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which has Lowell City Council minute for the meeting May 1st, 2007. Are there any comments regarding the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Now, second. Roll call, please.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Sean Ingram. Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda by adding the following items: affidavit for Mary Mason for destruction by shredding of city account documents; number two, to place Jerry Foley on the Street and Sidewalk Committee and Bid Opening Committee replacing Ted Morrell; and ordinance establishing sewer connection policies and a schedule of fees for connection to the City of Rogers sewer system by persons in Lowell, Arkansas, and for other purposes with an emergency clause. Do I hear a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Public Forum, Curtis Wagner.
My name is Curtis Wagner. I live at 200 Fox Run Place. I want to call your attention to Greenberg, Kansas. It's an old town, about 1,500 people. It got wiped out by tornado. But, they had sirens, and the sirens give them 20 minutes to do what they're going to do. Imagine a town like that with no sirens, how many people would have been killed? And, we're four times as big as that old town. They can afford sirens, but we can't. There's something wrong. If Lowell ever gets hit by a disaster, that's exactly what it'll be. Because we're setting ducks. But the cheapest way out is not always the best way out. If we could invest in three sirens, that's all it would take, including the annex over to K Springs. But we need them bad, and there is no substitute for sirens. I'd like the City Council to kind of think, where are we going to get these sirens? See if you can come up with something, because we really need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Next item on the agenda is the Committee Reports, Parks, Recreation, and Special Events.
At this part, time on the parks committee, we're in a, we're in the design work of our construction plans and be, we'll be working with Gary Carnahan and his group to further get these out. We are going to have to do a full set to put out for bid. Of course, the weather's delayed us on our last couple of weeks, progress in our work. We will be setting a meeting hopefully for this coming Monday at the end of this meeting.
Thank you, Sean. Utilities Committee.
The ordinance that's in our packet for tonight is something that needs to go over, and we'll vote on that next month sometime. But we'll have a meeting Tuesday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM, at City Hall.
The 22nd?
Yes.
What's the time, 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance Committee.
We, we met Tuesday night, last week, and we, we actually, for three hours, we discussed the selling of animals on the 71 business, and we kind of went through and we had a, we had a small audience and we had a lot of good comment. Tom is writing an ordinance right now. We're going to require anyone that sells animals to obtain a permit from the city, and they're going to have to provide information, and I don't know where Tom's at on that, so, kind of, put him on the spot, I guess.
When do you want to have another meeting, Keith?
Uh, we'll probably set it when, probably.
At the end of the, at the end of the.
Yeah.
So you got, y'all want to look at it in time to get it on the agenda for next meeting, for sure? That's what, that's what the plan was?
Yeah. So, I didn't know if you'd have it ready tonight, or if you want to.
I'll have it ready tonight, but I will by your meeting.
Thank you, Keith. Finance Committee.
I don't know if this, is it on? Okay. Okay, we met on Friday, May 4th, at 6:00 PM. We were charged with a recommendation regarding the damage caused to a car owned by Mrs. Brenda Helm. After we were in the meeting, we were informed that the window repair had been done, and the cost was $186.21. After discussion, the committee voted unanimously to deny the request for three reasons. The city has toward immunity, does not carry liability insurance, the city has not budgeted any funds for current liability claims, and the committee does not want to set a precedence of this nature. Any questions?
Who's on that committee?
Marty, me, Eric.
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 Nasser.
Nasser, yeah. Nasser wasn't there, he sent an email.
Nasser voted by email, Keith. Any comments? Thank you, Mary. Next item on the agenda is Old Business. Mary, would you like to give a report on the City Hall Building Fund?
Okay, I sent you all one of these, so you'll have that. The CD that I cashed in was $103,966.66. We had received $2,700 in donations. I calculated out for the whole year what we would have paid on May or long for the retirement system and the health insurance, that he has, he is not using those two benefits. They are budgeted, they've been budgeted in their respective columns. I took the money that it would have cost us and added it to the CD and deposited that into a new CD for 14 months at five and a quarter interest. The amount I deposited was $118,280.13.
Any questions, Mary? Thank you, Mary.
Actually, I do have one question.
Oh, excuse me, Keith.
That $100,000, that's, is that what was budgeted last year that we put into a CD?
Yes, we had entered that into a CD last year. We had earned $3,966.66 interest on that at the time it was in CD.
Is that supposed to be like the original payments when we had the, what was that money?
That was the first $100,000 that we did on the one budget, I believe it was in '06. And we budgeted to put that much into savings towards the new City Hall.
Thank you, Mary. Next item on the agenda is New Business, Introduction to Step System Ordinances by Gary Carnahan.
Thank you, Mary. We have, we need to make official the way we are going to operate the step systems. I should back up and say that we now have two, we have Borgesi subdivision online and the plant is operating. We have two homes actually connected to the system now. Also, across the street, Weatherston subdivision has 178 lots, and we had a meeting with the bank today, and I would, I would estimate that those, that that final plat will be recorded within probably 30 to 60 days, and I would guess that they're going to start building some homes in there within probably 60 days or so from now. So, with that, we need to, that brings us to the point of needing to finalize ordinances that deal with how we operate the system and the rates and fees that we charge in that system. The, I hope all of you had received in your packets or by mail a copy of these two ordinances. Good, I see some positive nodding there, that's, that's encouraging. Since I sent those out, I have received a couple of other comments and have made some more changes, which I want to, I just made a, of the pages that I changed, and they are in shaded here, just the changes are shaded, and those changes all relate to, I had three different people comment to me that they were not, that it was not clear who paid these different fees. Which fees are paid by the developer or the home builder, and which fees are paid by the person who actually moves into and occupies the home. So I hope that these changes have clarified that. If you'll give me just a moment, I'm going to, I'm going to pass these out to you. The, this is quite lengthy, and I think that I should probably not go over it, but just see if you have any questions or comments, if you've had time to review it yet. The, I'm not really asking you to vote on this tonight, but I would like to ask for you to be hopefully prepared to adopt these ordinances at your first meeting in June. What I'm really wanting to do tonight is just be available to have a general discussion if you, of anything you'd like to discuss, any questions you may want to ask, and I wanted to just make sure you have it, and I would like to have your comments back, any comments that you may have, by May the 25th, because that's when I need them in order to be able to make the changes, so that the packet that you receive in your, for your next City Council meeting will have the final ordinance with all the changes that you may have. Certainly, at this point, if you have any questions, clarifications, comments, we're very available to make those, incorporate those changes. I'd like to bring up one thing that I'd like for you to seriously consider, and that is the amount of the monthly service fee, which is $45 per month. The, in comparison, the City of Bethel Heights has a step system, and they charge, at this time, they're charging $35 per month, $10 a month less. They all, but, on the other hand, they have 400 paying customers. So there, we have two customers. And what it, what it boils down to is this, it costs a lot, it costs a certain amount just to operate, we have to, we have to mow and maintain the same amount of land and operate the plant, the electrical bill, and we have to do the tests that you mail in to DEQ for your monthly, for your monitoring reports. All of those costs are the same whether we have two customers or 200 customers. So our, our early costs are high compared to our revenue, and quite frankly, what you're going to see in the '08 budget is that the city will be subsidizing this system until we get enough customers to generate a cash flow to pay our operating expenses. So, I was, quite frankly, I was motivated to try to generate revenue as quickly as possible, but I may have over, maybe I over, maybe I, maybe $45 is too much, I don't know. I don't want to discourage people living in Borgesi and Weatherston by the amount of this fee. I don't think it's exorbitant at all, and I got a bid from one of the provider for doing a 100-unit subdivision, doing all the things that are required for maintenance, and it was like $37.50 a month per customer. So, I'm going, but I'm not paying that, and I scaled that back, and we're doing some of it with city crews, and we're trying to save money, but nevertheless, it's not inexpensive to operate the system, is what I'm trying to say. And, so anyway, I'd just like for you to think about that. Any input that you might have for us on that would be appreciated, but I think it may be one of the areas that we need to think seriously, think hard, hard about. The $5,400, I get a lot of comments about the cost of the installation, but that's about $150 more than it's costing us. We put it, we had proposals that we requested, and we received prices from two providers for the equipment and the installation. And from that, I negotiated with the low bidder and lowered the price even a little more than what was offered, but the truth is, the equipment itself cost a little over $3,000, then the installation is around 1,500 bucks. So, we've got a couple hundred dollars in here for city inspections and paperwork and making things happen. We use, when these are, when the installation comes in, we have to work with the builder to decide how to do, where the plumbing and electrical need to be stubbed out, we have to make two or three trips, is what I'm trying to say, or more, on every one of these installations to make sure it's done right. So, anyway, those are kind of the questions that most people have asked me, are about those prices. The, another question folks have asked me is about the city maintaining control. We have some folks who've already come and said, "I just want to have my plumber install this, and I know where I can buy tanks up in Kansas and pumps in South Arkansas, and I can do this cheaper than this." And I've taken a hard line that the only way you can get the system is you come to the City Hall, you pay us $5,400, and we are totally in charge of what it is that's installed and who installs it. And so I hope you'll back me up on that, if that's the way this is written. I feel like I must do that, because I'm going to wind, we're going to wind up with 3, 4, 500 of these someday, the way, based on the subdivisions that are already approved, and if we don't have consistent materials and installation, it'll be a huge nightmare to operate and maintain. So that's the approach we've taken.
Gary, when, when this is all set up and finished, the end result is the city will be maintained, so if we have any breakage, then if there's miscellaneous parts, we're going to be running all over the place. That's correct?
That is correct.
I had one question, with us requiring them to use us to do that, I just want to check with our attorney and say, is that in common, or is that, that's totally acceptable as far as?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Gary, did you say that this was a, the low bid, or an approximate bid on this $5,400?
It was, it was a low bid, and then I negotiated it down from the low bid. I got, I received two bids, and then I worked with the low bidder and got him to reduce his price a little bit more.
What was the next bid? Can you remember what the next bid I put up?
I don't, I don't remember.
Okay, thank you.
So anyway, you can continue to give me your feedback, comments during the week, email, phone call to the office, and we'll be happy to incorporate, discuss your revisions or be hap, try, try our best to incorporate any changes that you want to make into the documents.
I have a question, Gary. Instead of having that through the 25th, can we have that to the 21st, where everybody makes their comments, and then we can go over those on the 22nd at our meeting, committee meeting?
That's easier on me, it may, I only did it to give the council members as much time as possible, but that's certainly, today is the 15th, so that gives them six more day, five more days after tomorrow, so, I mean, if that's okay with the council, certainly that's fine with me. Our Utility Committee will be discussing this at 6 o'clock on the 22nd. Anyone who wants to come to that meeting is certainly is welcome. Okay, if no, no other questions or comments, I'll take a seat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is a city letterhead and city seal. City of Lowell has never adopted a logo, yet we use it all the time on everything that, that we use, our correspondence, our clothing, and I'd like to hear a motion regarding the adoption of the city seal, which we would use on stationery, clothing, et cetera.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, the city logo and the city letterhead.
Second.
Is this something that we legally have to do, or is it just something, just to make it official?
I think it's just official. Trying to get some consistency. Our outside correspondence right now is going out with everything, and we're trying to establish a standard letterhead and seal for all official city correspondents going to outside people. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Camila Lamans.
Yes.
Darren Brock.
Yes.
Jerry Foley.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Carol Harmon.
Yes.
Sean Ingram.
Next item on the agenda is the Rogers Lowell Chamber Information concerning our becoming a complete and supported member in economic development. At this time, I'd like to invite Raymond Burns, Beth Stevens, and Greg Stanfield to discuss this with you.
Well, I'm just going to give you a little bit of history and background. If you've been in Lowell very many years, you know that there was a Lowell Chamber of Commerce at one time, and I believe it was in the year 2000 that, and many years prior to that, it was discussed a merger of the Lowell Chamber and the Rogers Chamber, and in 2000 was when that took place. I'm, I'm a past president of the Lowell Chamber and chairman of the Rogers Lowell Chamber this year, and one of the things that, I guess we're here to talk about tonight is economic development for Lowell. This is kind of the, the missing link between Rogers and Lowell with regards to a fully engaged chamber and our economic development foundation. We've, we've discussed this with past administrations, and so I guess we just want to be here tonight to answer any questions and kind of present the plan to some extent. So, I'm going to turn it over to Raymond or Beth or somebody, so.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Thank you all very much. I think you all have probably seen just a listing of some of the services that we provide as a Chamber of Commerce. First of all, let me say how proud we are to be serving both Rogers and Lowell, and we just want to do a better job in Lowell. Economic development speaks to the economic vitality of a community, and that comes when people partner together and work together, and that's really what we do, is we bring folks together. I promise you, I will create more questions than we'll be able to answer tonight, and I'm not asking that any of the questions, we really try to resolve this evening, but I think our request would be that if there is an interest on the part of the council, that we look to the 2008 timeframe and your 2008 budget, which will be started, I assume, in just a few short weeks, and that we sit down and see if we can define what you all would view as a successful agreement and what we would view as a successful agreement to try to take Lowell forward in the economic development realm. I do know that we feel like, as, as there are, as there is in any community, there is, needs to be an effort to define just what it is we have to sell, we need to market that product, and then we need to actually go out and sell it. So, it's not going to be a, you sign on the dotted line January the 1st, and by the 1st of March, we're going to have all this business moving in. It will be a destination, that will take a while to get there. In fact, it's really not a destination, it's a journey that'll take some time, but it will take all of us working together, and we're very hopeful that we would be able to provide that service to you all, and that we'd be able to work closely with you all and help move, move Lowell in an even more positive direction than it already is going. So, with that, Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions that we can, and just look for the opportunity to move forward and see if this is something that will work for both the Chamber and the City of Lowell.
Anyone have questions, or Raymond?
Eric, yes.
Sir, I was at a, a meeting this morning in City Rogers, a quarterly business meeting, and it was a great time to get to sit down and listen to what's going on in North and it was a great time to get to sit down and listen to what's going on in Northwest Arkansas and the United States, and ultimately, the world. You know, the one thing that I'm really anticipating about this is the fact that the City of Lowell needs the next step, and I'm just curious if there's any one thing, one part about this that you can explain to us that will really be able to push us forward.
As far as what the next step is?
Yes, sir.
I think the very most important thing we need to do is just define what it is we have here to sell. We're, we're marketing people, we would be the marketing arm of the city, and before we can sell that product, we need to define what it is we have to sell. Where all the, where are the available landowners? How does it fit with the current city land use plan? What kind, kind of development do we want? Do we want an industry next to an elementary school? Obviously not. If we bring, if we bring retail in, what impact will that have on the city's budget so you all can provide services? I think the very first step is, after some agreements reached, is we've just got to build relationships, we've got to get a lot of people around the table and find out what that vision is, and we've got to find out what our product is, and that will take some time, and we develop a marketing plan around that, and we let everybody know what Lowell is. We already, Lowell's name is already out with our website. Beth helped me out, the last three months, we have 1.36 million times, those were referrals that came just through our website, and it's not the Rogers website, and it's not the Rogers Chamber website, it's the Rogers Lowell website. So, we're already doing a lot of things, and we'll continue to do a lot of things. But I think just a whole marketing plan to move us forward, to build the relationships with the State Department of Economic Development, with the local builders and developers, it's just Lowell is here, but there needs to be more of an awareness. City services are moving in a great direction. We need to just make sure that when someone comes in, that it's real easy for them to go from step A to step B to step C. And quite honestly, we need somebody in Lowell full-time that lives in Lowell, that's a part of the community, that has an office here where you can look down the street, knock on the door, open the door, whatever, and we're here. It's, it's a little bit difficult for us, even though we're just four miles away. We get down here as much as we can, we get around our, the community of Rogers as much, as much as we can, but we're actually doing economic development in all of Northwest Arkansas. I mean, people don't move to a community, they move to an area. So, I guess the short answer to your question is, we need to define the product, and we need to market it, and the sooner we get started, the, the sooner we'll see some results.
If I may, Councilman, I would also add to that, that Raymond spoke to recruitment of businesses and marketing, but we also believe that there's a great deal of services that we can improve in terms of existing businesses, small business startups, those businesses that are currently in Lowell, where we could maybe get a little bit more engaged in helping them be successful, just as we do for so many businesses throughout the area. Hope that helps.
Anybody else have any questions?
I noticed that the cost on, we get right down to the bottom line here is 85,000 annually. We're gonna be expected budget something here in the near future, I assume. What kind of a breakdown do we have on this 85, 85,000 annually? Wages, offices, is there any kind of a breakdown that we could expect on where that 85,000 dollars would be going?
As we develop the plan, yes, sir, we, we will have a little bit more of a breakdown. That, of course, doesn't, that won't cover the whole cost, but we're looking at a full-time person that would be here, probably the cost of offices, telephone, computer equipment, training, marketing cost. I could pull a number off the top of my head and tell you 150, 200,000 dollars a year is what this effort will probably cost, but until we actually sit down and get to the details, it'll be different each year. Product development is a little bit more labor-intensive in terms of not just the staff person we have here, but all of our staff. Marketing, depending on the type of marketing you do, obviously costs money. You know, some of the stuff that we already have set up, so it'll vary from year to year, but I can, I can tell you from experience with our relationship with the City of Rogers, that it's a pretty static, stable amount from year to year. As costs go up over a period of time, we, we probably would come back, maybe not in the first year, the second year, or the third year, but as we evaluate this, it may be that we ask for a 3% or 5% increase over time, maybe in the year three or year four, but I'd be, I'd be pulling that out of my hat right now. It'd just be, it'd just be a wild guess right at this point.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, tonight, are we, are being, are we being asked to approve this, or are we just, is this just a presentation?
This is primarily an informational meeting. However, I know you all have done a lot of homework on this subject. You've had almost a month to do this, and Michael has been working on this also, and so has the Chamber. If you all choose tonight that you have enough information to go ahead and pass a motion to put 85,000 dollars in the budget for 2008, we can go ahead and get started. But if, if you want another meeting, that's up to the council.
Is it really necessary to vote on that tonight, or can we just?
Not necessary, no.
Because, I mean, that will be done in budget time. I mean, I'm, I'm all for this. I know we've talked about it several, several years.
Keith, I think we're gonna have to do it before budget time, because we've got a lot of preparation to do. We need to decide, you know, at the council's convenience, but we've got a lot of work to get ready, so come January 1, we want to hit the ground running for our 85,000 dollars. I guess is what I'm saying. Now, Michael has done a lot of work on this, Beth has been helping him, and Raymond, but, you know, it's, the time has come that we need to decide. We don't necessarily have to decide tonight, within the next month or so, I would say we need to know where we're going.
I really don't have a problem deciding tonight if, if you guys want.
Anybody else? Let's, let's let Beth here, let's let Beth talk for a minute. She's, she's, she's the Vice President of Economic Development.
Mayor, I can just expound all night, but we're excited about the possibilities if the council decides that this is something that's feasible. As Raymond mentioned, we believe that there's a lot of homework and a lot of research that needs to be done, a lot of input that's necessary from the community before we can even begin to set a direction for this program, but we look forward to that opportunity if it's deemed to be feasible, and very much welcome your input this evening or at another work session, and throughout the process if we move forward with this. So, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Beth.
I have to just, I have to mimic what Keith said, you know, I think this is a great, great program. I've seen it in use in different forms in other cities, and I think it's something we need to seriously look at.
I don't think there's any question about it, Eric. Officially, it will start in '08, but Raymond, they need time to find help, and, and we've got a lot of homework sounds like to do so they can get in gear, and, and personally, as you know, I'm a big long-range planner. I think we need to be getting on with the show, folks, if we're gonna participate.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we allocate 85,000 dollars next year's budget for, for this.
Thank you. Second? Any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
After speaking with Raymond this week, I learned a lot more than what these papers had explained.
I'm sure.
And I have to give Raymond credit and the Chamber credit for things they're doing for Lowell that we don't even know that they're doing for Lowell, as well as the county, and they don't get the credit they deserve. And I too am definitely in favor of this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Kamala Lamans?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is affidavit for Mary Mason for destruction by shredding of city account documents. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is just a housekeeping item.
It's housekeeping, yes, I'm sorry.
I move that we approve the affidavit.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Kamala Lamans?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is to place Jerry Foley on the Street and Sidewalk Committee and Bid Opening Committee replacing Ted Morale. Is there any opposition to putting him on those committees? If none, he is so appointed. Next item on the agenda is establishing a sewer connection policy and a schedule of fees for connection of the City of Rogers sewer system by persons in Lowell, Arkansas, and other purposes with an emergency clause. Gary?
We have, we have a lot of needs in the, about the northern 10% of the City of Lowell is in the Rogers Water Service area.
Excuse me, Gary, this is a housekeeping ordinance, because we ha, already have approval, so Gary's just putting some numbers to it, didn't have to go through the committee. Sorry, Gary.
So, and we have a lot of needs there. The City of Rogers has, does not have any plans in the near future to extend sewer. Actually, until Park Cent, to give you an illustration, until Edinburgh subdivision and the school and Park Central were built, there was no sewer in Lowell in the Rogers Water and Sewer District. Zero. So, that gives you a clue how much, there's about 150 homes still there that are on septic tank systems. We have reports that some of them are failing, and so, we feel like there's an urgency to try to put together some projects to help in that area, but we have no funding in place, and this, this, these proposed TAPs fees match the amount that are, that is being paid in the Springdale side of Lowell, the Springdale Service area, the fees that we implemented to pay for the Puppet Creek Sewer Extension. This will make a uniform payment schedule for anyone who gets a building permit in Lowell, whether you're in Rogers or Springdale. Right now, the building department's having to go back and forth on that, so it'll be a more consistent approach to that. And quite frankly, we anticipate quite a bit of construction in that part of town over the next few years, and it will give us an opportunity to create a funding source to pay for some of these improvements that we're contemplating. For instance, for example, we have an opportunity, we're discussing in the Utility Committee the opportunity for a 2.75% loan from the state of Arkansas, but we don't really have a way to pay off the loan. So, it's a nice rate, but for sewer projects. So, this would, this would kind of finish, provide a funding source and clean up, as the mayor was saying, kind of a housekeeping thing that we need to clean up to provide consistency across the city. So, if you have no objection, we'd like to ask you to approve this tonight, even though it's short notice, it's, it's worded almost exactly like the sister ordinance for the Springdale side of town.
Mr. Mayor, do you know how much money approximately we can, we'll take in? I mean, and, and what's the value, do you think we'll make?
It's, it's po, believe it or not, with, with the, with the projects that are in the works, it's possible to bring in over $100,000 a year.
Keith, Don, how many permits do you have sitting on your desk right now waiting on this ordinance? What's the total value of the permits?
Fasten your seatbelt.
That's right. Hang on, boys and ladies. Sorry about that.
Got 18 permits waiting on this ordinance. They all deal with the Lowell Station Apartments. The sewer portion of it is almost $220,000.
Don, are those permits on the north or south side of Lowell?
They're in the Rogers Water Service area.
Right, the north side?
Yes. That's a little bit ironic that the Station Apartments are in the Rogers Service area, and the Honey-Supplementa's residential addition just to the east of it would be in the Springdale side.
Thank you, Don. Gary?
That points out just the inconsistency. If we don't have this ordinance, we have two projects that are side by side on the same street, one of them will be paying fees and the other one will not. So, we feel like that's not the way it ought to be, and we should have a consistent application throughout.
On top of that, they're built by the same builder.
Darren? I'd like to, to move that we place this on third and final reading by title only. That's been the rules.
Sean? Excuse me. Roll call, please.
Kamala Lamans?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
An ordinance establishing sewer connection policies and a schedule of fees for connection to the City of Rogers Sewer System by persons in Lowell, Arkansas, and for other purposes with an emergency clause. Do I hear a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
You said this does have an emergency clause, sir.
That'll be next. Roll call, please.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Kamala Lamans?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
I entertain a motion to enact the emergency clause.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Eric Schein?
Yes.
Kamala Lamans?
Yes.
Carol Harmon?
Yes.
Sean Ingram?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Jerry Foley?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
That will be ordinance number 785.
Thank you, Gary. Next item on the agenda is setting a committee meetings, parks, recreation, special events. Do we have one set for that? You have one?
If this Monday would be the 21st?
Yes.
6 o'clock at City Hall.
21st. That's all right. Street and Sidewalk Committee. Personnel Committee. None set there yet. Finance Committee. Utilities Committee, Water, Sewer, and Sidewalk, that's set for the 22nd. Ordinance Committee.
Do we want to meet to look at these ordinances, or? It's up to you guys, the ones that we got tonight. Because there's a Utilities Committee meetings on the 22nd. I don't know if you guys wanted to review this, or, I guess we can collectively, I guess, review it and send comments.
If you could, review that before the Utilities Committee meeting, might would speed up the process.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm trying to think, we should meet before, that doesn't give us a lot of time. We'd have to meet this week.
Yeah.
I can't do that, huh?
Keith, seems to me the role of, of your committee or your co-committee, I think you and Marty are co, maybe everybody was chair of that committee, would be to look at ordinances, but when something is more specifically put into another committee, like that... committee, like that, uh, sewer grade ordinance, I think you're going to be just repeating the same, uh, uh, function that they're, that they're already undertaking. They're going to look at it specifically and, uh, the things that you would do, they're going to do, I think. In other words, it's not like a generic ordinance part of that, that you'd want to take a look at in addition to what they're already going to look at. And then just with, you know, we have unfinished business, we have the door-to-door issue to take on, and that's going to be probably as involved as your pet sales, if not, much more so. And, um, and what we could do with pet sales, Keith, if you like it, we could, like I said, we could email it around to your committee members instead of having to look at it again, but you probably need to get a meeting set to start on your door-to-door effort.
Man, I'm not sure I got any time left this month.
I could do the 28th, which is Monday.
I'll be out of the country, but if you guys want to go ahead and meet and get something started on that.
You're going to be gone for two weeks?
Yeah, I'm leaving next week and won't be back till, uh, Sunday before our next meeting. I'm going to get it started from, I don't know if you're going to wrap it all up, I'll have to review it like we have to review the dog ordinance.
You guys want to do the 29th at 6 o'clock? And we could meet here again in case we had to have a big crowd.
29th?
Yeah, at 6 o'clock.
29th, 6 o'clock. Courthouse. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
No objections, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.